Fast forward to current now. The whole thing has collapsed, you need help. Setting up this committee, we realize that we're not getting revenue from the beer halls. The real nation of people available. Licensing of beer that is being done under the roof of local government and ourselves is led to a proliferation of beer halls. We used to have a monopoly pretty simple, I'm sure, on the sale of opaque beer, this one. So you realize that every city council has got this machinery. And Guero, Blavai is in the Pingu. Yes, Motale, it's Mota something. Guero is something else. So every Spanish had the license to sell opaque beer exclusive, which we used to sell in those areas. For now, yes, during in Yesa of our own opaque beer process. We so collapsed to the extent that we then ended up leasing our, our, I don't know what it's called, the beer thing. Yeah?
Beer hardware.
No, 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 no. The one that used to make the beer. The brewer, yes. So we then placed out the brewer to, 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 to Delta. So we no longer have a brewer. Other, other cities still have their brewers. Other cities still have their brewers. So we, we completely surrendered the brewing of beer, opaque beer, and gave it to, 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 to to Delta. So they're making beer, I think it's okay. But then we were left out with the beer outlets. Now, because we no longer have our brewer, we need to buy the beer and so forth. That whole thing has collapsed. And then we left it, it is then leasing out. There's a licensing regime of, there's a bar everywhere. People are licensing bars all over the place, and I've mentioned it. And one of the biggest problems is that we have a dual licensing regime. One is the city council and the other is the local government. One makes another license, the local government. There's also that deals with the licensing of liquor. And so on. So this dual licensing has created the proliferation of small bars. Now these small bars have taken over the supply of that liquid of happiness to people from us. And so people are happy, but we are not getting any revenue. And this is our outlet, our real estate has now been subdivided into tax shops, into beer halls, into machinery, outlet, and so forth and so forth. So realizing that, we then instituted a committee to look into the Rufaro Marketing Enterprise. We are left with one employee, I suppose, and this is the same time as the time we instituted that thing. That's how far it has fallen. There are more employees than that.
Yeah, there are more employees. I mean, I need to correct the way you said that the board was constituted all the time when the recalls were made. It was constituted in 2019 by Mayor Compa.
Yes, I said before the recall. Oh, yes. So we are on the same page, John Dwyer.
Actually, the employee is there six.
There are six. Yeah, so there are six, maybe some of them. So from an organization that was employing hundreds of people, we are left with six employees. As at the time in 2019, when the, the, the committee was set up. Committee for that way back in our full complement together. We now need to work together again to deal with this issue of our real estate. Our Ruffaro you call those properties right now. They are shops, they are, it is economic activity going on. And council is getting zero, literally zero, from that. So what we need is for the committee to tell us what it found, how it found, and then we move forward. We are going to have a strict timeline. This is another of council properties. These are legal, legal assets. Another of council properties that has just been taken by people. People just take and it is never to give back to council. And all these properties, eighty seven of them, in all suburbs of, of the city are benefiting, not the residents, but individuals for one reason or the other. So that must stop and I hope that this committee will deal with the issues and will be able to stop. I said I should that not allow us to give you the committee in advance before it is presented to the mayor and council. Once it is presented, it then defaults to the members of the committee and then it comes back to full council. So we are going to truncate the process. We are going to give timeline of this committee for this report going back to council. Where we can debate and implement the measures that have been put in place. We can then tweak the recommendations, look at the recommendations, and implement the measures. So that's how I understand the procedure to be, unless there's a different understanding of that. What is it? Yes, so I end up sitting, we sit there together, yes? We don't. Oh.
Thank you, Roger. Your event where you are.
Ah, thank God. But thank you, thank you, thank you councillor for that question. So we remain here. The chairperson gives a summary of the report. We listen to it and then we proceed. And let me just finish. There's a misconception that councillors are not qualified, they don't know what they are doing, and so forth. I really need to also have a meeting, a group, where people were saying that a new councillor cannot understand complex issues. Now, councillor Ian MacConey was the first chief executive of GMB when it was still functioning, or one of the first, like, chief executives of the Great Marketing Board when it was still functioning. He was also the chief operation, the chief executive of Manika Freight when it was the original company. He was also the chairperson of Mest, Mest Mutual, a line, when it was still functioning. He was also the secretary, the chief secretary in the Prime Minister 's office, where everyone was as a very young and early candidate. And anyway, first, because we had nothing to do before we were councillors. We had a lot to do when we were councillors. So this is his lesson, he's one of the most qualified. He understands what we are talking about as a councillor. Thank you, Ken, for sitting.
Your worship, the mayor, councillors and staff. It's been a long time since this special committee was set up. As you rightly pointed out, it's way back in 2019, prior to the recalls and prior to COVID. These were the two major events that took place and got him away. It is just appropriate that we are now at full strength and can exercise our minds towards sorting out issues relating to Ruffaro Marketing. I'll do no more than just give a little bit of a preamble and then rapidly move to findings and recommendations. Ruffaro Marketing was originally a department within City of Ferrari, as I pointed out, under City Marketing Department, registered as a private limited company in April of 1919, and it is a hundred percent owned by City of Ferrari. Among its principal businesses, as recorded in the memorandum of articles of association, is to brew, possess, sell, supply all types of beer, carry out business of wholesale and retail of beer, ale, stout, wine, spirit, liquor merchants and dealers. This is a whole range of all the bad business. It also holds itself as trader and dealer and code haws, essences, squashes, syrups, aerated minerals, artificial and table waters, and all other alcoholic and non-alcoholic drinks. That's all in the, in the articles. It carries on into the bureau of the business of bottle store, proprietors, distributors, importers, exporters, carriers, commission and general agents, tobacconists and dealers in pipe, cigarettes, cigars, snuff. Just right. Snuff, matches, lighters, and all the other smoking requisites. Now, until October twenty nine, twenty twelve, Ruffaro Marketing was a leading brewer and distributor of beer. Its major distributing channels being tens of beer halls, your worship, you mentioned eighty seven there, taverns, off sales units. It also was leasing certain premises, namely stand for source returnable lines to Delta Beverages Private Limited. And I'll come back to that one just now. The liquor undertake was closed in October twenty twelve due to viability challenges, a multiplicity of litigation, a running exposure to statutory and trade creditors, as well as an unsustainable wage bill. Ruffaro Marketing was also reeling from stiff competition from other traders such as nightclubs. You mentioned that, your worship, private bars, bottle stores, shabby teams, some of which arrived at the doorsteps of Ruffaro Marketing Office. The appointment of the committee. On twenty nine November twenty nineteen and on seventeen December twenty nineteen, Harare City Council resolved to appoint a special committee to look into council's operations of Ruffaro Marketing Private Limited and mandated his worship the mayor and the town clerk to appoint members and the secretary. On the fourth of January, a nine-member team constituting a special committee was appointed by his worship the mayor of the City of Ferrari in terms of section one hundred of the Even Council's Act, chapter twenty nine fifteen. So our committee was given the following terms of reference. A, to establish and concede that council resolutions on Ruffaro Marketing. B, to confirm the number of beer halls belonging to Ruffaro Marketing. C, to establish the status of each beer hall vis-à-vis formal lease agreements and period to the end of each lease. D, to determine whether each lease for the beer halls is up to date in creditors of Ruffaro Marketing and the amount owing to each creditor. F, to assess the viability of the assets of Ruffaro Marketing and their ability to liquidate creditors. And G, to make recommendations for the future structure and management of here is now the methodology that we apply. Questions of City of Ferrari on Ruffaro Marketing, board minutes of Ruffaro Marketing, Board of Directors' meetings, lease agreements between Ruffaro Marketing and its tenants, data listings as a twenty third The committee held informant interviews during which it either interviewed the board chairperson, the finance director for City of Ferrari, who is also a board member, the chief executive of Ruffaro Marketing, the chairperson of the business committee of City of Ferrari, the city's valuations manager, trade union leaders, and Ruffaro Marketing workers' representatives. The committee visited selected premises managed by Ruffaro Marketing, which are being leased to tenants in order to determine their state and viability. The committee also held a series of meetings with some of these tenants. In addition, it also carried out liberal research for benchmarking The special committee has produced a detailed report of findings and recommendations. The committee went into some detail on the following matters that the council are encouraged to study. The report is the governance section that deals with the structure of the board directors, the holding of board meetings, AGM, and production audit accounts. The report includes a change of all council resolutions on the ownership and management of Ruffaro Marketing and its assets. The report contains a record of interviews with key informants and tenants. The report lists the listed deserving existing assets. Based on its huge property portfolio, Ruffaro Marketing can leverage this removal of assets. In the interest of time, I shall not tend to a brief summary of the findings and then move on to recommendations. The committee's overall impression is that the answer to today's patterns and less hard decisions are taken on the tenants and quality of business undertaken by outlets is improved. While the committee is satisfied that the assets can be much more productive, council should consider engaging specialists in the field and hold them accountable. At present, only the brewery is earning anything approaching expected returns. In the light of the above, here are some of the recommendations. The business case for Ruffaro Marketing has shifted over the years in line with this, as other forms more relevant have taken over the selling of traditional products. Within the scope of this committee's investigation, it does not explain the productivity of assets assigned to Ruffaro Marketing. Clearly, fresh ideas are required in the committee's This is for A, the property portfolio assigned to Ruffaro Marketing should not be sold except where in specific cases such sale is strategic. In his verbal submission to be sold based on an internal valuation, authority for that sale was not confirmed. The committee considers that in line with his overall findings, better candidates for disposal would have been Vito Red Room in Barre and the other outlet in Gazza Land. There is a proposal from Delta Corporation for the acquisition of Ruffaro Brewery. Of all residents in accordance with economic trends in these neighborhoods, the current tenants and rental realizations are not viable for Ruffaro Marketing and, sorry, to ensure appropriate contribution and return on assets. Two tenants were found to be leasing multiple outlets. This would not be a problem if they were not, they were, they were not in rental areas.
All right, we seem to be having connection problems with our team at the townhouse, but we continue to bring you that commentary. And it's a special council meeting where this committee managed to sit down and look at Ruffaro breweries and the licensing that has been taking place. So we have learnt from the conversations that City of Ferrari and the local government ministry have the licensing or have the authority to license, you know, beer halls and bars and all that. And because of that anomaly that has been happening, the local government ministry licensing people and also the council licensing people, they were not able to keep track of who is doing what, where, and how. And so the committee was tasked to look at the lease agreements that were there, who was running Ruffaro breweries and, and, and the outlets that it used to have, and what it then means for council to be able to generate revenue from that particular stream. Because the facilities were there, the, the, the platforms were there, and the bars are still there. The question is how are they generating the much needed revenue for the City of Ferrari? And that is what the committee was tasked with. That is councillor Ian MacConey, who is the chairperson of that committee, and just highlighting the findings from their investigations around Ruffaro, the beer halls that were owned by the City of Ferrari. We continue to try and get in touch with our team at the townhouse. At the moment, we seem to be having network challenges. Do also share with us wherever you're watching us from and also give your own side of things. What do you think the City of Ferrari should be able to do in order to make sure that our council is running well? Alright, so we are still trying to get our connection back with the team at the special council meeting taking place at the townhouse. And as soon as our link is up, we'll definitely share that. We want to also hear the deliberations that are going to take place after the recommendations are read out so that we understand what the city of Ferrari is doing in order for them to work around the revenue collection issues and the different streams that the city of Ferrari have in terms of fundraising and actually being profitable. So we continue to wait for a feed from our team on the ground to be with us as we work on the network issues. This is Zimbabwe Daily, your everyday platform. If you have not had an opportunity, please do check up our Facebook page, our YouTube channel, our Twitter account and follow. I know a lot of you, you love our cartoons. We want to bring more of that informative stuff that will help us to build a formidable platform that you are all proud of. This is a people's platform, so if you have got news, if you've got anything, you've got somebody that you'd want us to bring onto the platform, do feel free to send us a message, DM us on our platforms and we'll make sure that it is done. Thank you so much for tuning in and thank you for loving our platform. Thank you for following us. Thank you for staying in tune with us. Yesterday, we came up with the cartoon of the ghost in Nyatime after requests from a number of our followers on our platforms. And yes, thank you so much for showing that you really liked and enjoyed that particular illustration of what's happening in Nyatime. We continue to encourage people to live peacefully and peaceably with one another and register to vote, participate in civic processes and be part of the change that you want to see. So city of Ferrari has been devoured with a lot of challenges of late and we see that the local government ministry continues to have overburdens on the council. And as we can see, the councillors are working so hard to make sure that the city works again. Yeah, so we continue to try and get our feed from the council chambers and to continue to follow what is happening there. So do stay tuned in and as we try to bring back that broadcast. Darling, Tony Emmanuel Pofu, yes, we are trying to reconnect with our team on the ground right now so that we're able to continue with the deliberations that is taking place at the special council meeting. And we are hopeful that we'll have our team in studio and be able to share some of the take homes that have been happening at this special council meeting. The CCC making its mark, heard and seen in that particular council. We have the MDC represented as well as ZANU PF. At the end of the day, it is about doing the council business so that all of us are able to benefit from what the city is able to do. So we continue to try and get our feed back up from the council chambers so that we are able to follow through what is happening. So we'll continue to bring that. Like I was saying, please like and follow our page, also share with others so that they may follow what is happening. This is Zimbabwe Daily, your everyday platform. You have any suggestion for topics, do feel free to come through. To come through. Alright, so that was the situation happening at the townhouse. So the councillor Ian Mulcone was presenting the report of findings of what is happening with the different beer holes and the licensing procedures that have been taking place over the years and how council is benefiting from those from those revenues generated. And it seems like there has not been a comprehensive report around the revenue that is actually being generated from the different beer holes that the city of Ferrari has. And they are going to, all the different committees are going to sit down, deliberate on the report that was presented and be able to come back after two weeks with the feedback around what each committee has been working on. As has been highlighted by the other councillor, that the report is based on findings of twenty twenty. So they are waiting to see if anything is being done or has been done in order to deal with the problems of revenue leakages in the city of Harare. So we continue to follow through what is happening at city of Harare as well as any other city that is in Zimbabwe. So if you are in the different towns and you also want us to cover your council meetings, do get in touch with our team at marketing@zimdaily.com and we'll be able to send our teams. My name is Yvonne Muchaka and we'll bring you more deliberations around the issues happening in Harare and in other cities right here on Zimbabwe Daily. Thank you so much for tuning in. Have yourselves a wonderful rest of day.